Justice Dodge?
Here. Thank you.
Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of October 5, 2020, regular meeting minutes.
I'll entertain a motion to move to approve the minutes of the Board of Trustees meeting of October 5, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll.
Justice Fenton?
Aye.
Justice Calandella?
Aye.
Justice Dodge?
Aye.
Justice Healy?
Aye.
Justice Getzinas?
Aye.
Justice Malani?
Aye.
Mayor Pico?
Aye.
Friends of Orland Park Library raffle license?
Mr. Chairman?
Justice Malani?
I move to approve issuing a raffle license to the Friends of Orland Park Library Organization to conduct a raffle at their building on our future virtual gala taking place on Saturday, December 5, 2020, at the Orland Park Library.
Second.
Any questions, comments? Call the roll.
Justice Malani?
Aye.
Justice Getzinas?
Aye.
Justice Fenton?
Aye.
Justice Dodge?
Aye.
Justice Calandella?
Aye.
Justice Healy?
I'm going to abstain. I have a relationship with someone on the board there.
Mayor Pico?
Aye.
Accounts payable?
I'll entertain a motion to move to approve the accounts payable from October 6, 2020, to October 19, 2020, in the amount of $3,358,921.94. So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Call the roll.
Justice Healy?
Aye.
Justice Calandella?
Aye.
Justice Fenton?
Aye.
Justice Dodge?
Aye.
Justice Getzinas?
Aye.
Justice Malani?
Aye.
Mayor Pico?
Aye.
Consent agenda. Item A, payroll for October 2, 2020 approval. Item B, ordinance amending Title VII, Chapter 16, raffles of the Orland Park Village Code. Item C, resolution authorizing application of the Village of Illinois Transportation Enhancement Program funds for multi-use path along the Guinness Slough from Grange Road to Will Cook Road. Item D, resolution authorizing application by the Village for Illinois Transportation Enhancement Program funds for multi-use path along 82nd Avenue from 143rd to 151st Street. Item E, resolution authorizing application by the Village for Illinois Transportation Enhancement Program funds for multi-use path along 104th Avenue from 159th Street to 163rd Place. Item F, resolution authorizing application by the Village for Illinois Transportation Enhancement Program funds for multi-use path along 167th Street from Steeplechase Parkway to 104th Avenue. Item G, Land Development Code amendments two. Item H, 159th Street LED street lighting conversion, streetlight purchase. Item I, picnic tables, super cooker, barricade rentals. Item J, fencing installations rejection. Item K, memorandum of agreement, MOA, between the Metropolitan Alliance of Police Chapter Number 159 and the Orland Park Police Department pertaining to the initiation of a pilot program to test the use of body worn cameras, approval. I'll entertain a motion to approve items A through K.
Mr. Chairman?
Justice Getzinas?
May I please recommend that we take item number F off the consent agenda?
So you want to remove item F?
Correct.
Okay.
Mayor Pico?
Justice Dodge?
I have a clarifying question about item G. I don't feel that we need to pull it off if I just want to verify something. So do you want to take it as a question or do you want me to pull it off the agenda?
Well, we'll have to pull it off the agenda to take it as a question. So I'll entertain a motion to approve items A through E and items H through K of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second. Call the roll.
Who moved that?
It was Malani who seconded and Justice Dodge made the motion.
Justice Dodge?
Aye.
Justice Malani?
Aye.
Justice Fenton?
Aye.
Justice Calandella?
Aye.
Justice Healy?
Aye.
Justice Getzinas?
Aye.
Mayor Pico?
Aye.
Resolution authorizing application by the Village for Illinois Transportation Enhancement Program funds for multi-use path along 167th Street from Steeplechase Parkway to 104th Avenue.
Mr. Chairman?
Justice Malani?
Resolution number, please.
2045.
I move to adopt resolution number 2045 entitled Resolution Authorizing Application by the Village for Illinois Transportation Enhancement Program Funds for Multi-Use Path Along 167th Street from Steeplechase Parkway to 104th Avenue.
Second.
Any comments or questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Justice Getzinas?
I have a concern with the Village's ability to use property for the good of everyone and personal property rights. I do have a concern on 167th in particular where I know of one resident who will be dramatically impacted. Her property will be a widow and I do have a concern about that. I don't know if the answer might be to have public forums, more education, but I have an issue with it.
I guess what specifically is your issue so that staff can answer it?
Well, I know on this particular piece, because of the terrain, you know, there will be some trees that may, mature trees that maybe have to taken down. And also with cutting down of a hill that affects the driveway where the whole driveway will have to be replaced to the home. So I think when, you know, we have a resident that's been in a home for a long time, a widow, you know, I want to be respectful of their rights too and, you know, the right for the greater good, but that is a concern, you know, how to handle that with the resident.
I think we share that concern with you and we have discussed that with the owner of that property as well. And it is a challenging location. That is no question that the driveway and how it would interact with the bike path. It is a challenging location. Our intent was that when we go into phase two, we'll have a much more detailed survey available to us. And we were going to take a look at how we can best incorporate the two together, the driveway as well as the bike path. We do not have all the information available in the first phase because we do not do a detailed design. So I think that's our intent is to address that in phase two.
Just a question, Rashid. With a retaining wall, let's say if the retaining wall goes up, whose responsibility going forward? Is it to fix that retaining wall, maintain it if that property is not located in the Village of Orland Park?
That would be Village responsibility.
Even though the property is not located in the Village, correct?
Because we are building it.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Rashid.
Any other questions or comments? Call the roll.
Justice Malani?
Aye.
Justice Calandella?
Aye.
Justice Fenton?
Aye.
Justice Dodge?
Aye.
Justice Healy?
Aye.
Justice Getzinas?
No.
Mayor Pico?
Aye.
2020 Land Development Code amendments.
Mayor Pico?
Justice Dodge?
I'll move this so we can discuss it. I'll move to approve the 2020 Land Development Code amendments two as recommended at the September 29, 2020 Plan Commission meeting, recommended at the 5 October 2020 Committee meeting in the Hall and is fully referenced below.
Second.
Mayor Pico?
Justice Dodge?
My question is for staff. You know, it says under the Committee of the Hall that we've removed under the pond discussion for now while we figure out financing and those types of details. So what we're adopting tonight does not touch the ponds. Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Call the roll.
Justice Dodge?
Aye.
Justice Healy?
Aye.
Justice Fenton?
Aye.
Justice Calandella?
Aye.
Justice Getzinas?
Aye.
Justice Malani?
Aye.
Mayor Pico?
Aye.
Cabota Utility Cart Replacement Purchase and Delivery?
Mr. Chairman?
Justice Fenton?
Move to approve the use of Sourcewell Corporate Purchasing Contract 062117-KBA and to award the purchase and delivery of one caboto utility cart replacement to Martin Implement of Orland Park per quoted number, per quote number 1798989 dated 10/1/2020 in the amount not to exceed $27,627.09.
Second.
And I'll entertain a motion for a minor amendment to spell Martin correctly to M-A-R-T-I-N. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved. Second.
Call the roll on the amendment.
Who made the motion?
I did.
The second motion was?
The amendment.
The amendment?
Mm-hmm. Yes. Fenton and?
And who seconded it?
Cindy.
Okay. Justice Fenton?
Aye.
Justice Getzinas?
Aye.
Justice Dodge?
Aye.
Justice Calandella?
Aye.
Justice Healy?
Aye.
Justice Malani?
Aye.
Mayor Pico?
Aye.
Justice Fenton?
Aye.
Justice Getzinas?
Aye.
Justice Dodge?
Aye.
Justice Calandella?
Aye.
Justice Healy?
Aye.
Justice Malani?
Aye.
Mayor Pico?
Aye.
Area lift replacement purchase and delivery?
Mr. Chairman?
Justice Fenton?
Move to approve the use of Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Contract Number 041719-TER and to award the purchase and delivery of one Genie TZ-50 Trailer Mounted Boom Lift to Randall Industries of Elmhurst, Illinois in an amount not to exceed $61,728.85.
Second.
Any questions or comments?
Can I correct something? Justice Fenton, it's $23.85.
Oh, sorry.
Okay. So can you just restate it?
Mr. Chairman?
Justice Fenton?
Motion to approve the, I move to approve the use of Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Contract Number 041719-TRE and award the purchase and delivery of one Genie TZ-50 Trailer Mounted Boom Lift to Randall Industries of Elmhurst, Illinois in an amount not to exceed $61,723.85.
Second.
Any questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Justice Healy?
George, if I could, I guess, direct this to you. The, I have a lot of customers in that who, when it comes, when items of big equipment like this get purchased by the Village, they wonder why we don't buy something that's four years old or two years old and pay half the price with no delivery or anything like that. You, I would imagine you guys go through that process of evaluation, but could you just confirm that why we, you know, we go with new?
If the board may recall, a few weeks ago, it approved a fleet assessment contract with Mercury and Associates, and that's exactly what we're going to be doing as part of that process. The key element to that is life cycle costing. It's to determine, you know, when to purchase, when to get rid of these big pieces of equipment. So that's going to be a very large part of it. One of the things that we're very fortunate as a municipality is we can buy vehicle and equipment relatively much cheaper than you or I as an individual. So you have to factor all of that in. So one of the things that is happening is this is a key piece of equipment. So we only have this, we only have this one. So there probably is some cost savings to picking up something at a four-year price, but then we know it has to work. So, I mean, it goes, if you think about a squad car, you can get it cheaper when it's used, but we know it has to work. So that's why we cycle them in these, on the schedule they're at right now. So, long story short, at the end of the day, Mercury and Associates, that is one of the things that we're looking at. We're looking at, are we right, is our fleet right sized? What is our life cycle for each of that fleet? And?
Correct me if I'm wrong, Mercury's not looking at this though because they're not looking at all of our pieces of equipment, correct? They're looking at just our, or did we add that on?
We're going to look at the big pieces of equipment.
Okay.
Yeah. Not, obviously not chainsaws and stuff, but this, something like this is a big piece.
So I'll comment on this as someone had to buy some expensive pieces of equipment. Generally speaking, buying used equipment always bit, early on when I had my company, always kind of bit me in the rear end and was a problem because you didn't know how they were maintained. And new equipment, just you know how they're maintained and if you take care of them, they last for 20 years as opposed to used equipment, which don't. So that's a large reason for doing that.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Call the roll.
Justice Fenton?
Aye.
Justice Getzinas?
Aye.
Justice Dodge?
Aye.
Justice Calandella?
Aye.
Justice Healy?
Aye.
Justice Malani?
Aye.
Mayor Pico?
Aye.
Elevated tank number five rehabilitation engineering contract extension?
Mr. Chairman?
Justice Fenton?
Move to approve the contract extension for Strand Associates, thereby increasing funding from $22,900 to $36,900 to cover the additional 14 visits and 84 hours of oversight and extend the contract through November 30, 2020.
Second.
Any questions or comments?
Mayor Pico?
Justice Dodge? So I get that estimates are always just that estimates. Do we know why this one was off by this degree? Yep. Joe?
Yeah. When our staff, this is our first tank, and so when we did our initial estimate, we just figured that we would have some in-house expertise. We were short and we didn't have that expertise that Strand did. And so we realized that it's a little more complex than we could handle ourselves. And so that's why it was off.
Thank you. And yeah, this was in the background, I think, that question. So. Any other questions? Call the roll.
Justice Fenton?
Aye.
Justice Healy?
Aye.
Justice Dodge?
Aye.
Justice Calandella?
Aye.
Justice Getzinas?
Aye.
Justice Malani?
Aye.
Mayor Pico?
Aye.
Agreement for vehicle maintenance and repair services with Joe RZA Ford of Orland Park.
Mr. Chairman?
Justice Malani?
I move to approve authorizing the Village manager to execute the agreement for vehicle maintenance and repair services with Joe RZA Ford of Orland Park.
Second.
Any questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Justice Fenton?
George, are they strictly going to be repairing the Ford products?
That's who, so our primary light, our primary passenger and light duty vehicles are Ford products. And so that is going to be, that's, we're sending our Ford products there. That'll, they can do more, but beyond that, we talk, we're into their heavy duty equipment and the heavy duty equipment will we, will maintain in-house as best as we can.
And how did we come to the conclusion that it would be cheaper to send these products to Ford versus in-house?
So if the board may recall, as part of the ERI, and then, and then we had our reduction in staffing that occurred because of the financial constraints due to COVID, we eliminated a number of positions.
Right. I read all that.
Yep. And so one of those salaries is going to go towards the outsourcing. I know in, previously I've done an analysis on, on the, on these PM, the PM costs. And generally, our costs, we can't beat the dealership for these costs when you factor in everything else. So it's better for our personnel who are much more highly trained to focus on the very complicated, the bigger pieces of equipment, the routine PMs, the brakes, oil changes. Price-wise, when you factor everything in, we don't compare. And so this is, and it's, we're very fortunate too because we do have a Ford dealership in town. There are a lot of towns that don't have Ford dealerships. And so it's just a quick in and out.
And George, our employee mechanic costs are all in, are what, over, they're six figures, I'm assuming, all in?
Yeah.
Benefits and everything, which relative to someone working at Ford on these types of routine maintenance, obviously is far greater.
And if you think about it, we are, when we got rid of one mechanic by having this contract, we're actually bringing on dozens of mechanics because they have dozens there. So we even saw that today with one of the squad cars. Had a nail in a tire, they pulled in priority, they're out in 20 minutes. So we, you know, we can't, we can't provide that type of, that level of service, that quickness, because we just don't have that wide depth. So this is a pilot program. We're going to see how this works out for us. We'll have cost comparisons. This is, this is good till the end of next year. And this all gets factored into with what we're doing with Mercury and Associates. So I think it's, it's a, I think it's going to be a win-win. We're helping a business and we're helping ourselves too.
Any other questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Justice Getzinas?
It does go through December 31 of 2021, but it also gives the Village a right to terminate with 30-day notice, correct?
Correct.
So if the level of service isn't satisfactory, which I doubt that it's going to be the case, but you do have a right to terminate prior to the expiration with no penalty.
That's absolutely right.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Mayor Pico?
Justice Dodge?
So George, when are we going to see the math on this? Because I get that you have the statutory authority to do this, right? Village manager, form of government, but you know, where's, where are the numbers that this is going to save us X and visibility to the explicit trade-offs we're making by reducing staff and outsourcing a contract? And before you say anything, George, I want to make it explicitly clear for the future record. I bought my first car from RZA in college and I bought a number of cars from them over the years. So I'm a big fan of RZA and Ford products. So that's not the issue. I want to be explicitly clear about that. I just want to know where the details and the math are to bring this up now.
Absolutely. So we can, we just started our pilot and so the, and we're running our figures right now. We can, we can, we can either wait for the full year to see how this pans out, but like I mentioned, when it comes to a tire, for example, we, I've done this analysis in the past, we can't beat their prices. I mean, they're, because their tire prices incorporate like labor and stuff. It's our labor cost that dries up our costs. And so, and they, they work on book rates, we don't. There is, there is an incentive for them to get this stuff done quicker, but what, absolutely as part of this whole process, we are going to have that analysis as we're going on.
All right. So I guess Mayor Pico to continue my first question is, you're saying you think that this will pan out?
Yep.
That's what you're representing?
Yep.
And you're asking us to say, you know, let's give this a try?
Right.
Okay. So do we have even a preliminary analysis or any kind of pro forma to say, yeah, this pencils out where we're better off on a cost per tire fixed or oil change delivered to do it outsourced versus fully loaded to pick up the points that we've talked about earlier? Most people in government don't do fully loaded costs. So if, if this is a better deal for the Village, great. I just want to see the math sooner rather than later.
You got it.
So why don't I suggest this because there'll be plenty of opportunities between now and, say, the end of November before the budget sees, before the budget is approved. Why don't you give us the analysis for the first, you know, from the time we start this until the end of November?
You got it.
Bring it back because we have 30 days. We can cancel it, so.
And we don't even have to take vehicles there. I mean, it's just a contract. So if we, if we decide not to, there's no requirement to take.
And I see the benefit. I mean, you have a tire, for example, now you have to come in, whatever our guy is doing on an important, another important piece of equipment has to drop that, has to now start doing tires. They've got someone there doing tires all day long, right? So they've got to get the, you know, so then they've got to completely change what they're doing. And the same thing with an oil change, that type of thing. So, and you know, obviously we can run the whole fleet through RZA in a day, in a day if we wanted to for an oil change. We can't do that because we just have one mechanic. So I certainly see, I see the potential benefits and, and again, you know, having had a fleet not nearly as large as ours, but pretty large, I recognize that routine maintenance made sense to just go over to the oil change shop and do it and not do it in-house because we had better things to do with the mechanic that came in to fix our other equipment.
Mayor Pico?
Justice Dodge?
Just additionally, George, when you take a look at this, and we've used this type of logic in the past to take a look at other projects. For example, one of the big arguments about having someplace out southwest for, let's say, salt, reduce travel and cycle times on our major plows to keep them on the street doing what they're supposed to be doing. So I just would like staff strongly recommend that we think about the cost per hour of cycle time because I'm assuming we're taking the vehicles to RZA as opposed to them coming to porter them back and forth. So just properly done, fully loaded cost benefits.
Will do.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Justice Getzinas?
Just wanted to say, looking at some of their prices, I'm sure it's a fleet discounted price, but I think their prices are very attractive. I wish I can take my own car and get it done for this amount. So I think they were very fair with their bid proposal that's shown here.
Any other comments? Call the roll.
Justice Malani?
Aye.
Justice Getzinas?
Aye.
Justice Fenton?
Aye.
Justice Dodge?
Aye.
Justice Calandella?
Aye.
Justice Healy?
Aye.
Mayor Pico?
Aye.
Main Street Triangle Parking Structure Automated, Automatic Parking Access Control System.
Mr. Chairman?
Justice Healy?
I move to approve accepting Designer Access Corporation's proposal in the amount not to exceed $33,755.52. And I approve, and I move to approve accepting a 10% contingency in the amount not to exceed
Second. Any questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Justice Getzinas?
Just a quick question. What happens if somebody is in the garage and the garage shuts and they can't get out? Do they have to call the police?
It says, it says that in there. It automatically goes up for anyone leaving. As the, as the vehicle approaches, the gate will go up for them automatically.
Okay.
But there is an intercom there just in case.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Justice Healy?
Is this garage, does this, I mean, does this benefit UFC operation?
Not so much UFC operation, it's more of the, it's more of the vandalism and the challenges we have there in the evenings.[1679.04] we have there in the evenings. So UFC operations are closed by that point. There was, the police have been out there quite often for, you know, just vandalism and spinning tires and all that that's occurring there. So this is to reduce that.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Call the roll.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Trustee Malani?
Aye.
Trustee Fenton?
Aye.
Trustee Dodge?
Aye.
Trustee Calandrello?
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Mayor Pico?
Aye.
15501 South 70th Court, Class 8 Resolution.
Mr. Chairman?
Trustee Healy?
Could I have a resolution, number John?
2046.
I move to pass Resolution Number 2046 entitled, "The Resolution Determining the Appropriate Notice for Class 8 Status Pursuant to the Cook County Real Property Classification Ordinance and from time to time amended specifically for the special assessment of abandoned property with no special circumstance for certain real estate located at 15501 South 70th Court, Bremen Township, Orland Park, Cook County, Illinois, PIN Number 28-18-100-047-1001."
Second. Any questions or comments? Call the roll.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Trustee Fenton?
Aye.
Trustee Dodge?
Aye.
Trustee Calandrello?
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Trustee Malani?
Aye.
Mayor Pico?
Aye.
Volkswagen of Orland Park Vehicle Service Area Building Edition 8920, West 159th Street.
Mr. Chairman?
Trustee Healy?
I move to approve the site plan elevations and special use permit amendment for the Volkswagen's Vehicle Service Area Building Edition located at 8920 West 159th Street as recommended at the October 6, 2020 Plan Commission Meeting and as fully referenced in the motion below.
Second. Any questions or comments? Call the roll.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Trustee Malani?
Aye.
Trustee Fenton?
Aye.
Trustee Dodge?
Aye.
Trustee Calandrello?
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Mayor Pico?
Aye.
Resolution Regarding Extension of Economic Development Business Incentives in Response to COVID-19.
Mr. Chairman?
Trustee Malani?
I move to approve Resolution Number 2047 titled, "Resolution Regarding Extension of Application Deadline for Orland Park Commercial Impact Program."
Second. Any questions or comments?
Mayor Pico?
Trustee Dodge?
I think it certainly makes sense to keep something like this in place. None of us certainly can predict how far the economy is going to be damaged, given what we're going through with COVID. I guess what I'd like to do is with this program and with some of our other incentives, perhaps as a matter of formal policy, when we offer a package of incentives to a business, whether it's a program like this in terms of forgiveness of various insundary fees or it's a sales tax agreement that the village sees the entirety of all the packages that they're applying for and the total costs. And so I guess my, my question then, Mayor Pico, is I don't know if we necessarily want to try and amend anything to this, but perhaps at a future committee meeting or we can discuss, staff, when somebody comes before the village for incentives to do something great in our town, everybody sees all the fully loaded costs of supporting them, whether it's this program or it's any other types of sales tax, you know, abatements or incentive types of programs.
All of these programs have to be approved by the board anyway, so I just think it's a direction to staff to make sure you have that when it comes to the board for approval.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? I think this is a good program. Obviously, we don't know how far COVID is going to go. We're, we're in a pretty strong fiscal position to ensure that businesses develop here and that when they do come out of their, their shell and want to start building again or expanding again, that they come here first. So I think this is a great program for that. Call the roll.
Trustee Malani?
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Trustee Fenton?
Aye.
Trustee Dodge?
Aye.
Trustee Calandrello?
Aye.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Mayor Pico?
Aye.
151st Street Delays Caused by Comcast?
Mr. Mayor?
Trustee Healy?
I move to approve up to $75,000 in overtime costs for the 151st Street project, and I move to approve authorizing staff to seek reimbursement from Comcast for a total of $175,000 to cover the costs for overtime in 2020 and additional construction costs in 2021 caused by Comcast delays.
Second. Any questions or comments? George, you want to give us a little background?
I'll turn it over to Chris Cheed here in a second, but staff has been working very hard to try to get this project on time, to, to keep it on track. And there were a number of delays all related to Comcast taking their equipment down that has got to the point where we, right now, we're seeking this overtime so that we can at least get the two-way traffic ready for this winter, and then we'll finish up the intersections next year. Very unfortunate. It's, it's not unusual for our utilities to, to do this, but we are going to seek reimbursement. We will do our best to seek reimbursement from Comcast because of these delays.
Any other questions?
Mayor Pico?
Trustee Dodge?
So I certainly get it, and it certainly feels good to want Comcast to get this done, but short of litigation, I'm not going to hold out much hope.
Yeah, we're going to do our best. I know in other utilities, in the other utilities, some are pretty good on paying for the delays, they know it, but I don't know how it's going to work with, in this case. But we've already been working with KTJ attorneys to, to get this all ready to go. Once the project is completed, we're going to have all those final prices.
Got it. And then just a minor suggestion. The, the motion for the $75,000 is actually for overtime and other cost overruns, not just overtime staff hours, correct? Just so I make sure I hear that.
Seventy-five is just overtime?
Just the overtime, okay.
Yep. And then the other $100,000 is going to be the additional costs that it's going to take to, for next year.
Thank you for the clarification.
Any other comments? Call the roll.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Trustee Malani?
Aye.
Trustee Fenton?
Aye.
Trustee Dodge?
Aye.
Trustee Calandrello?
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Mayor Pico?
Aye.
Budget Adjustments, Fourth Quarter, 2020.
Trustee Malani?
I move to approve an increase to the fiscal year 2020 expenditure budget of the Retiree Medical and OPEB Fund in the amount of $294,995 and a decrease in the general fund by $4,300.
Second. And George, could you just, just give us background on the, the cost with the retire medical, retired E-medical and OPEV fund? I know it's, it's pension and health benefits to our retirees, that that's what's driving this cost, but if we could get a little detail on it?
Yep. And maybe I'll ask Kevin to, just to kind of fill the board in on, on this.
Yeah, so the, the OPEV fund, the retiree health insurance and OPEV fund is used to pay for health insurance claims of our retirees. And this year, we had significantly higher number of retirees in the past because of the, the ERi. So early on in the year, we had health insurance, we paid out health insurance claims to our retirees over $100,000 for the first couple of months. The budget had anticipated about $50,000 per month to be paid in retiree health insurance claims. And even for the first five months of the year, every month was over, over that $50,000 mark, over $100,000 for the first two months, and then has dropped each month since then. But for the first half of the year, we were spending for retiree health insurance claims well above, well higher than what we had included in the budget.
And while we, you weren't here, so you may not know the answer to this question. I'm going, so I'll ask it in a leading fashion. I'm assuming that a lot of the reason for this is because we had so many more retirees take this, that's why we underestimated this fund?
That's what it looks like, yes.
So in theory, with that many more retirees taking this, there's still going to, there'll be more benefits and cost reductions that will offset this in our, in our other costs. We're not going to see that, of course, in the budget here, but we should see it in the budget going forward. Is that not correct?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Mayor Pico?
Trustee Dodge?
So I guess as an abstract question, this was potentially anticipatable when prior staff was starting to estimate the cost of the early retirement programs, correct? It doesn't sound like we carried an estimate of potential claims increase with people taking the ERi. That's my conclusion. Is that about right?
It was underestimated.
By prior staff?
Yes. This was, this was as part of the budget approval.
Okay, because I don't remember, I don't remember being told as a voting member of this board by prior finance staff that this is a potential risk, and I don't know if I ever saw the numbers adjusting for this. So I just want to put that out there.
Okay. There, I believe there were some additional healthcare costs, but we also assumed, I can't remember how many people we assumed that were going to retire, and I think that number, correct me if I'm wrong, ended up being much higher than we originally assumed. Was that?
I believe that's true, yes.
So, so I agree with you that the staff, previous staff may have underestimated it, but I think they also may have under, part of that underestimation might be that they underestimated how many people were actually going to take retirement, and I'm sure COVID had an impact as well on that retirement. Any other questions or comments? Call the roll.
Trustee Malani?
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Trustee Fenton?
Aye.
Trustee Dodge?
Aye.
Trustee Calandrello?
Aye.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Mayor Pico?
Aye.
Ordinance Amending Appendices A and B to Ordinance Number 5525.
Mr. Chairman?
Trustee Healy?
John, could I have an ordinance number?
5551.
I move to approve Ordinance Number 5551 entitled, "Ordinance Amending Appendices A and B to Ordinance Number 5525."
Second. Any questions or comments?
This, Mayor Pico?
Trustee Dodge?
This is strictly for staff, correct, George? Just double checking.
That's correct.
Thank you.
And do we have a comparison of what this was compared to what it was before?
So there's, there's, so the first part of it is the, in the Human Resources Department, we're actually, overall, we're reducing staff from three and a half full-time equivalents to three full-time personnel. And, and as part of that, the, the part-time position is going to be moved into the full-time. But overall, it's, the staffing is being reduced from three and a half to three. And on the other one, it's really just a title change from web and application support technician to communications and marketing assistant, which is.
I think you're on the wrong. So we're amending the, we're amending the salary ranges, correct?
Just the salary ordinance. So these are just title changes. So what, what, the only real changes here are where the want coordinator is going from part-time to full-time, but overall, in that department, it's being reduced. And the other one is just title changes.
So everything else is the same? No changes to salary?
Right.
Okay. Any other questions? Call the roll.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Trustee Calandrello?
Aye.
Trustee Fenton?
Aye.
Trustee Dodge?
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Trustee Malani?
Aye.
Mayor Pico?
Aye.
Outsourcing of HR Leave Management Functions Professional Services Agreement.
Mr. Chairman?
Trustee Malani?
I move to approve entering into an agreement with TRUP HR for a period of one year for HR Leave Management Functions.
Second. Any questions or comments?
Mayor Pico?
Trustee Dodge?
George, just talk me through the process you went through to find this firm.
Sure. Denise, could you, if you want to go up to the thing? So Denise was, as we were evaluating the entire, all the changes to the department, so what, let me just start with this. Our previous assistant HR director took another position somewhere else. We promoted within, and this was that part-time position now becomes, so we, overall, we've reduced the, the positions in the department. And so what Denise did was she was looking for opportunities to make that department more efficient so that they would stop having to function and worry about the minutia and the, and really talk, think strategically. So she went and she researched as many as the, as many of these firms that do this, and, and she can just talk about maybe your due diligence process, Denise?
Sure, thank you. So Society of Human Resource Management has a variety of vendor listings and resources available for these types of services in terms of benefits and leaves management, resources and vendors. And TRUP came up as one of the leader ones, in addition to Pinnacle and another resource. I vetted them through contacting some of their references. I specifically sought those in firms that were looking and working with municipalities and with private sector. This organization has a mix of both, they indicated, as well as, as Pinnacle. My concern was because this was our first opportunity and first venture in moving in this direction, I wanted to have a resource that was a limited time scope, so this contract would be about a year service, and should this, should the village decide to expand that, we could have that option.
Thank you. Just following up, George, appreciate that clarity. Well, playing it back, it's like your research turned up this firm, and this looks like a good option for us in the short term to make increased productivity and/or manage costs, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
And the question I have is, so leave management seems like something that we should be able to handle largely through our ERP system. Is the new ERP system going to be able to handle this?
So the, the problem with leave management is that there's, it's not just so much the software as it is, there's a lot of legal components to it. Denise, maybe you can just walk through some of the challenges.
So the Tyler Technologies product will, will definitely assist us. I've worked with Tyler Tech with their Eden's processing software in the past, and so it has those components to it, Mayor. It'll allow us to better track some of those leaves. There are complexities with regard to various leaves based on state, you know, federal laws, depending upon the type of leave that is available, and then add to that the various contracts that we have with the village and other benefit paid and non-paid leave options. So our desire is that, that will be the answer with, with Tyler Tech, but I expect that this will probably be a meld of both, an outsourcing opportunity as well as Tyler.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Call the roll.
Trustee Malani?
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Trustee Fenton?
Aye.
Trustee Dodge?
Aye.
Trustee Calandrello?
Aye.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Mayor Pico?
Aye.
Rapid COVID-19 testing.
Mr. Chairman?
Trustee Katsinas?
I move to approve authorizing the village manager to authorize an agreement with Arc Point Labs of Orland Park for COVID-19-related testing.
Second. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second from Trustee Dodge. Any questions or comments? Call the roll.
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Trustee Dodge?
Aye.
Trustee Fenton?
Aye.
Trustee Calandrello?
Aye.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Trustee Malani?
Aye.
Mayor Pico?
Aye.
Do we have any citizens or visitors, anybody that wants to speak? Coming up. State your name, and you have three minutes.
Madeline Flaherty, Orland Park. Early voting started today, and I think there's a few things that voters should be aware of. I know I've heard, seen things online, people question whether or not there should be marks on a ballot. There shouldn't be any codes or anything on the ballot and any marks except for the initials of the judges. There is a specific box for that. So that is okay if you see the judge's initials in a box. So that is okay if you see the judge's initials in a box. Other markings should not be there. The other thing is that in this election, more than any other, mail-in and absentee ballots have become very significant. If a voter who has gotten an absentee ballot chooses to vote at the polling place, they can do so. Number of people that I've spoken to felt that they had to request a mail-in ballot, which they did not because of all the mailings that they received. If you've gotten a mail-in ballot or an absentee ballot and you choose not to vote it, take it with you to the polling place and submit it to the judge, because when your name comes up on the, on the screen, it will show that you requested the ballot. Submit it to the judge, and then you can proceed to vote, and your ballot will be cast. If you've decided you want to vote in person, but you got rid of the ballot, you destroyed it, you forgot to bring it with you, you can still vote in person, but you will be provisional. There's a form that's filled out by the judge and the voter. The voter then votes on the touchpad, the touchscreen, and as of the last election, the primary, that then produces a paper ballot as well. That ballot is taken by the voter and put in a special envelope sealed by the voter that goes to the judge. That will go on the blue ballot at the end of the night, and that will be submitted to the drop-off station. In this area, it's at Bridgeview Courthouse. Another thing that I confirmed today with Trevoy Hicks, the early voting supervisor from the Cook County Clerk's Office, if you already cast that ballot by mail, either the mail-in or the absentee, and now you've decided for whatever reason you want to change that, or you just want to vote in person, you can do that as well. You will then become a provisional voter. Cast the ballot, or vote on the touchscreen, get the paper ballot, that'll go into the envelope, and they will then nullify the mail-in ballot or the absentee ballot. How they do that, they do it through the provisional voter number. How they sort all that, I have no idea. But it says that provisional votes are not cast on Election Day. After Election Day, provisional votes are examined to determine if they should be counted or not. The Clerk's Office will identify the ballots using the provisional ID number. This is the only way that the Clerk's Office can accept or reject provisional ballots. So if you are a provisional voter, they will make that decision. Your vote will not be cast on Voting Day. If you bring in that absentee ballot or the, or the mail-in and return it to the judge, your vote can be cast as usual. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Flaherty. And just for the record, you are an election judge, right?
Yes.
Okay. Just want to make sure everyone's getting good information and that they know that you're qualified to let them know that. So thanks for the information. Anybody else? Board comments. Trustee Fenton.
First of all, I'd like to thank staff for the birthday cakes. Treats are always wonderful. And I'd also like to wish everyone a happy and safe Halloween. Things are a lot different this year, and I know a lot of the kids are super excited about being able to go out and trick or treat. So if you're able to supply some treats for the kids, it's great. Just remember, masks, gloves, everything will be fine, and hopefully they have a good day and not like a day like today. So happy Halloween in advance.
Trustee Dodge.
Just a couple of comments. Mayor Pico, thank you. Picking up on Kathy's comments for all the families out there and for all the kids out there, Halloween is obviously fun. This is a very unusual year, so please do it, do it safely. And then I think as everybody in this room probably for themselves is kind of keeping an eye on the situation with COVID in Illinois, and, you know, it's, this is still a tough one. We're not out of the woods yet, so I'd like to again encourage everybody to make the best decisions they can with the information that they have available to them. And, you know, my hope is that as a country, as a local community, we get through this sooner rather than later. I personally find it discouraging, I think is the right word, that there's new emerging data and science, that there's long-term effects for the people who get this thing. And I saw, I was telling Trustee Getzinas earlier, saw an email from Johns Hopkins University that there's very early-stage evidence that COVID-19 is causing type 1 diabetes in some patients. And that Northwestern here in the Chicago area is starting to take a look at the long-term cognitive effects. All of that said, you know, I think we all have to continue to be disciplined and diligent and do the best things we can for our safety and for the broader community, and I think relatively simple steps are good for all of us. So, you know, God willing, we get through this sooner rather than later. Thank you.
Trustee Calandello.
Just a quick comment. I had the pleasure of driving by the township this morning, this afternoon, and saw a line out the door, a lot of people voting, which is great. So vote, if you can, vote early. Make a plan. If you have a good lesson about mailing ballots, you can always do it old school, early or even older, older school and do it on game day. So go vote and have a good Halloween, everyone.
Trustee Healy.
I'd just like to make a comment that I hope we could help out our local businesses and small businesses and retail shops who are still suffering from the COVID pandemic effect. A lot of people got PPP loans, a lot of businesses got PPP loans back in May and June, and a lot of that money is running out. So they've had a tough time so far this year, and there could be more stimulus money on the way, but I fear it's going to be tough on the restaurants and that in the next couple of months, and we should try and do our best to keep our, and help out our local businesses. So do your best to shop Orland.
Trustee Getzinas.
Thank you. In addition to the Village of Orland Park having their Halloween 2 to 8, there's excellent information on Halloween on the Village website. There are CDC guidelines, and there's also posters people can put up that they can print out, should they not wish to partake in Halloween, or if they do, there's specific instructions. The Orland Park Lions Club is also having a trunk and treat, October 24th on Saturday from 11:00 to 4:00 at High Point School, which is at 14825 West Avenue. Rumor has it there might be an Air Force jet there, so hope to see you there.
Trustee Malani.
Thank you. Last week, I took a ride through Orland Park, and I made a couple stops. I went by Orland Ridge, and I saw that, you know, the roads are starting to be put in place, and some foundations are being poured. And I also went by the Villas of Cobblestone to check that out, and they're breaking ground over there, and they're starting to make some progress. And new openings for businesses have been, you know, popping up left and right. You know, we had some ribbon cuttings, Arc Point Labs, VRS Realty, small businesses, you know, trying to set a footprint here in Orland Park. We've got Pete's Fresh Market and Stan Donuts coming as well. So what does all this mean? It means that despite this pandemic that we're in, Orland Park is continuing to grow. People and businesses want to come to Orland Park, and there's demand for homes here as well. And this is great news, I think, from what has been happening in the last seven months. So, you know, we've had a great turnout also for the Orland Park Police Department's National Night Out on October 6th. Definitely looked much different than the previous years. No, no police sirens, no big trucks, no helicopters, but you know what? Over 200 people still attended the event, and they did it safely. They social-distanced, and they enjoyed a night out at the movies with their families. And that's what it was really all about. Our staff continuously shows us how they can continue to have these events safely and provide the entertainment and things to do for our residents. So thank you all once again for that. Everybody enjoy yourselves, happy Halloween, and we'll see you at the next meeting. Thank you.
So my comments are short tonight. So the golf outing raised approximately $18,000 for veterans group, and that's even with COVID and, you know, lower participation because of that. So we still did a great job. Actually, the veterans groups that participated actually did better than previously because we had less groups that participated. So, so great job by all, and even with COVID, we still had a very, very successful event. Halloween, be safe out there, and don't forget, and I'm surprised that Kathy didn't mention, the Lions Club has an event here on Saturday, trunk or treat, weather, as long as the weather holds out. So please go enjoy yourself there. Please support your restaurants, support your entertainment centers. So when, you know, I've seen the numbers for the region, and entertainment venues in particular and restaurants have been really damaged by this. And, you know, restaurants, not so much the drive-through restaurants, they've actually done okay. It's the, the sit-down restaurants that have trouble. And with outdoor seating getting very difficult here because of the cold, I encourage you to, if you are going to go partake, to please do so because they can use the help to get through this winter, because we are going to see, we've seen, we're seeing already, we're seeing more cases, we're going to see more cases. I don't think this is a shock to anyone. It's cyclical, much like the flu, like rhinovirus. You're going to see cases go up, not to mention the fact that we're testing about 15 times as many people as we were when we had our previous spike. So if you listen to those studies, early on in April and May, it was 20 to 30 times as many people had it as what we were identifying. Well, now we're identifying those people because we're testing everybody. So you're going to see a caseload go up, and keep taking the precautions you've been taking. It's not going up because people aren't taking precautions, it's going up because the virus is behaving like a virus. So just continue to take those precautions. Please get out and vote. So I'm glad that Ms. Flaherty came up and spoke and gave us some information on the voting. From what I witnessed today, the good news is many people are still going out and voting. So I saw that many people are out there and exercising their right. I encourage everyone to do so. Don't be discouraged from lines that you see, still get out and vote, whether it's in early voting or on Election Day. Make sure you exercise that right, and it's one of the most important rights we have. So thank you very much, and.
Mr. Chairman, could I just, one thing about the Lions Club thing, it is $8 per child.
Okay. I didn't know that, but now I do. So, and we don't have an executive session, correct? We do not. So I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. Call or?